How's it going, Kataning? I just got another exciting podcast episode for you. I have with me our sixth, I believe now, County Commissioner Candidate interview, Mr. Anthony Shea. Thank you so much for being here today.
Thank you so much for having me, Andrew.
Glad to have you. Absolutely. So we've been trying to go through all these, introduce all of you guys to our County Commissioner Candidates, and Anthony is from the southern part of the county. And so I think it's especially important that you Kataning people pay attention. This is one of your potential next County Commissioners, and I want you to give him a fair shot and learn more about Anthony. And if you like what he says, then you'd hopefully give him your vote on May 21st and in the general election in November. Tell us about you. Tell us about your history in Armstrong County. How'd you arrive at this point?
How did we get to Armstrong County? When I was a kid, actually, my parents lived in the Trina Heights, and they wanted to get into the country when they found an ad in the Valley News Dispatch for a place in the country in Gilpin Township. And in 1977, our family moved out to Gilpin. I fell in love with that whole area as soon as I got there.
That's awesome.
Was raised, went to Gilpin School, went to Leechburg High School, and graduated in 1985. And then I went into the military. I'll talk about it a little bit more later, but for 22 years, I was sort of away, and then back in 2004, I moved back to the area.
Okay.
So when I was out and about, traveling the world, I met my wife. I said, "Someday, we're gonna move back to Leechburg." And she just said, "What's Leechburg?" I said, "You'll find out soon enough."
And so you did?
Yes.
Fantastic. That's awesome. Well, so what do you think makes you uniquely qualified to be our next County Commissioner?
There's two traits I have. One is experience. I have traveled the world and have many different experiences throughout my life. And the second one is leadership.
Okay. So tell me a little bit more about that. What do you mean by your leadership?
Okay. Leadership, I've been a leader pretty much all my life. I went into the Air Force in 1985, right out of high school. They made me a cop, and within about a year and a half, I was already starting to lead people.
Wow.
My first job leading was surprisingly, a whole bunch of prisoners, when they made me a prison guard and in charge of the evening shift.
Oh, my.
You learn about motivation. Talking a bunch of prisoners into doing things was really difficult. As time went on in the military, I got promoted quickly, started running different things while I was in the military. Worked as a patrolman, worked up to desk sergeant. That's basically a 911 dispatcher. And then one of the last jobs I had, as far as on the illicit side of being in the military, was I ran a DMV, for lack of a better way to explain it.
Oh, wow.
And I had to learn how to deal with the public, long lines, and not enough resources, and usually too many customers. While I was in the Air Force, I went to night school, got my bachelor's degree from the University of Maryland Asian Division. There, got a degree in computer science. Afterwards, I applied for officer candidate school in 1993, and was accepted and got commissioned in 1994 as a military officer. There, I spent another 13 years as a military leader, working various assignments in Air Force Global Weather Central and off at Air Force Base, Air Force Space Command. I worked on the GPS system, Space Track, then went on to work over in Europe and Africa, running the internet and then phone system for Europe and Africa. And then I took a very unique situation. They asked me to teach leadership and management for the Air Force at the Virginia Military Institute. And one of the three years, I really had a neat opportunity. My boss came to me grinning and says, "Guess what? We got a job for you." I ran the Virginia Women's Institute for Leadership.
Wow.
I was in charge of 168 women. It was the counter ego to VMI. Back then, if you recall, they didn't want to let girls in. Anyhow, this program held the women to this exact same standards as men. That was a really interesting year in my life. I learned so much. It prepared me, very much so, for having three daughters later on.
There you go. As one with three daughters, I understand where you're coming from.
And a lot of those women now are leaders in the Air Force. Some of them are out, some fly planes, do all kinds of different things. And it's kind of neat, over the years, to keep track of them through Facebook. And the last job I had in the Air Force, I ran the recruiting support for the Forest State area. So I got to learn a lot about western Pennsylvania, eastern Ohio, and Maryland, and west Virginia as well. A lot about the economies and such in this area. Learned a lot about just government programs in general because of what I had to do with working with the schools and such.
Yeah. You really have been all over the place.
And while I was in, I got to travel to five different continents, 35 different countries I'm allowed to talk about, and all 50 states. So I've actually got to see a lot of this world and seen how it runs all over the place. I can say one thing, just traveling all over, we have it so good in America. You know, thank my lucky stars every day, I'm an American and what we have here.
No doubt.
After I retired from the Air Force, I didn't stop being a leader. I've been doing stuff with drug awareness. I'll talk about that a little bit later. Also, I got hired on in the civilian workforce at North Point at BNY Mellon, where I took a job as a business liaison. And essentially, I worked with, inside the Bank of New York Mellon and Fortune 500 companies and brought them together to do business, basically a lot of the IT work. So I'd talk with their leaders, I'd talk with their IT people, I sort of liked the translator. About three years ago, I switched into healthcare. I worked a year at Highmark, is working with insurance, the Affordable Care Act. Learned a lot about healthcare from that. And then the most recent job I have now is a software engineer for UPMC. And we designed software for around imagery, tracking cancers, lesions and such.
Wow.
So keeping busy. And on my free time, when I'm not doing all that kind of stuff, I've got elected to the Leechburg School Board back in 2011. Very tough election back then. I won by two votes when it was all said and done. And from then to now, I'm still on the Leechburg School Board. We've transformed the school from where it was to where it's at now. We're sort of at the bottom, unfortunately, but we have worked our way up with Creation Nation, Invention Land. We've hired good leaders, and everything is going really well there. I also work as a vice chairman for the Lenape Joint Operating Committee as well. And as you all know, I started that back in 2014. There, we've worked to transform the school, bringing in BC-3, which everybody is appreciative of.
Absolutely.
Expanding out the adult education programs. We brought the GI Bill into the Adult Ed Program, so veterans who get out of the military can use their veterans benefits now, can actually have that paid for. We've also expanded out into Mercer County with the LPN Program.
Wow.
So needless to say, leadership is there, experience is there.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. So, wow. That's a lot of stuff, man.
Yes.
You've had a busy life.
I have. And if I get into this position, honestly, everywhere I've been, I retired, I mean, I started off as an E1 in the military, worked up to staff sergeant, which in pretty short time, then I got commissioned as an officer and retired as a major. Leadership is in my blood.
Yeah.
If I get into this job, I will come in every day. I'll be usually the first one in, the last one to leave. And I've learned how to be a leader, and it's not something you do. It's not you're on top commanding everybody else. As a leader, you actually work supporting everybody. It goes the other way. It's a very humble position if you do it. You gotta get to know every single person and find out what makes them tick, what makes them motivated to do what they do.
Right.
So leaders are basically brokers in hope. That's what we do. I'd like to lead this county.
I love that. Very cool. So just to learn a little bit more about you, what do you love about Armstrong County? What are your favorite things about the county?
Favorite things? Being outdoors a lot. My wife and I and kids, we like going on a lot of hikes. We go on Roaring Run, Armstrong Trail, the Buttermilk Trail. I love that trail, going up the little waterfalls and swimming hole up there.
Yes.
Besides that, I do a lot of running. You'll probably see me out running along the highway a lot. Sometimes you can almost get run over.
Yeah.
But I love just being outside. And some of the things I really love about Armstrong County, this is gonna sound kind of lame, I like just working in my yard.
Yeah, absolutely.
Cutting wood and working down by the pond, building a fire. And one of the neatest things of all is on an evening, sun's starting to go down, have a fire going, all of a sudden, sitting here drinking a cold beverage, and neighbors come by, and they just stop. And we started, you know, we chat, and it's just a great thing. That's what I love about Armstrong County.
Yeah, there's some unique communities here, for sure, and the people. It's a wonderful thing. Fun fact, I actually got engaged on Buttermilk Falls Trail.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Very good.
Asked my wife to marry me there. So any favorite places to visit in the county? And then we talked about a couple trails, that kind of stuff. Or favorite restaurants that you have?
Restaurants? For me, I'm a big prime rib eater. I love beef.
There you go.
The favorite places to go for that is Garda's. They have a special night for prime rib, and up at the Mariner.
Absolutely.
My wife, she likes more of the Villa, but I'm not complaining either. I love going there as well. My pant size shows it.
The Villa has been the consistent, like, one of the fan favorites, and rightfully so. It's an awesome place to eat.
Yes.
Okay. So that's kind of just the get-to-know-you part, and then I have a bunch of policy questions. And I know, I'm sure, with all your history, I'm sure you have a lot of different things to add to this, so I'm very excited to hear your answers to some of these questions. I have four big problems for the city of Kataning specifically, and so I think the county is kind of like a, Kataning's kind of a microcosm of Armstrong County in general. And so number one on that list is the availability of jobs. How would you, as a County Commissioner, plan to attract new businesses? How would you try to fill up downtown areas and fill up areas like North Point and those different kinds of projects?
That kind of stuff, people, you gotta, it starts off infrastructure, big and small. Obviously, there's tactical infrastructure, short-term stuff we gotta work. Every dollar we can get for roads, every dollar we can get for fixing up that type of infrastructure is very important.
Absolutely.
Also, we gotta look at the longer-term game, and that's where we get a corridor up to I-80. Imagine what we can do if we can release all those acres between here and Brookville for development, and also just make us the shortcut to get to Pittsburgh.
Absolutely.
So that type of stuff. I'd like to see a bridge in the southern Armstrong County, and ideally, a loop eventually that's sort of built around, the whole way around the city with our part being the part of the northern part of that. And another thing that people keep forgetting, you know, we talk about bringing jobs, and that is absolutely imperative, but another thing you can do that brings, expands the tax base is getting people to live here. And there's more than one ways. There's people obviously building their houses, and that's a good thing, but what we need to do is expand broadband completely through the county. Nowadays, in the 21st century, and being in IT specifically, there is no reason somebody can't work in Armstrong County and service anywhere in the world.
Absolutely.
And if we get that expanded broadband, all of a sudden, we, people want to live out in the country, and we have that infrastructure here. They could come live here, earn their money, and things are really good.
Yeah.
And even if it's a hybrid where people are going down to Pittsburgh, they can work at home for a few days and work in Pittsburgh. And my thoughts are, we basically, obviously bring the jobs to Armstrong County, and we also take the people from Armstrong County to the jobs, that being either the infrastructure, roads, or broadband.
Yeah, absolutely. I, you know, I think there's a lot of potential for communities like Ford City, Kataning, you know, Leechburg, all those areas to be bedroom communities of Pittsburgh, especially with the 28 corridor complete now, all the way down.
Yes.
Yeah. So I totally agree with that. Good stuff. Any other things you want to add to that?
As far as the jobs, obviously, we want to fill all the downtown areas, and there's tools that you can use, the LERTA tool where it provides tax abatements. Also, we need to know people, we got a market, obviously, Armstrong County. And I'm very humble. If I go to places like South Point where I worked at before I retired, that place is thriving. I'm gonna go down there and figure out what the heck are they doing right, or what are we doing wrong?
Yeah.
And I'll, you know, I'll go anywhere that is working. I don't care. I'll work with anybody we need to, to bring the business here. It'll do, it'll be like a full court press, you know, every cell in my being will be polling, trying to make that happen.
Absolutely.
And again, I don't care who gets the credit, where it goes to, but I want to bring those businesses here.
Good stuff. Okay. So that's my big, that's my big number-one problem. Number two, opioid epidemic is high on everybody's list as far as issues. You know, Armstrong County was number two in the state as far as opioid overdose deaths four years ago. I believe we were number four last year. So it seems to be trending in the right direction, but how would you, as next County Commissioner, how would you try to tackle the opioid issue?
Well, first of all, the opioid issue is personal to me, drug issue just in general. Had a close family member get involved in drugs, and it hurts the whole family. And if people think that drugs are just for poor people or rich people, I mean, it goes across all demographics. It doesn't matter who you are, old, young, but that person, you find out, you try everything you can, and sometimes it just drives you nuts because you can't get there. And the way it usually works in the end is the tough love.
Right.
Tough love, it breaks the heart of the people, have to deal with it. And I'm proud to say that person who had problems is now three years clean and sober.
Very nice.
And now actually taking it to different folks and helping them out, get to the same spot.
That's wonderful.
And I, as far as drugs and drug use, I've spent since 2007, working as the chairman for the Leechburg Elks Drug Awareness Committee, Chairman. Essentially, I work going into the schools and talk to the kids about the perils of drugs. I've also partnered over the years with the District Attorney, Scott Indresi, the State Police, Denise Morano, also the Drug, Indiana Armstrong Drug Council.
Yeah.
More recently, I've had Bill Rupert and Brian Myers come in and speak. We do that, we do poster contests, and then we've also partnered with the Lions who do their drug awareness programs. And as kind of Commissioner, solving the drug problem isn't gonna be just one thing. It's not a Johnny One note that works. It's gonna be a full court press. Every avenue needs to be approached, from the education of young kids, to the enforcement of laws, to when folks are in jail, you can't just put them in jail and throw them out and think you're gonna solve the problem. You gotta work on the rehab while they're there.
Sure.
So you gotta work on it from every angle, and that's what I'll do. I'll be a leader there. I'll lead the way and do what I can to help get all the troops in place to do what we need to do.
Good stuff. Okay. So number three on my list is the issue of blight. You may know many of the communities around us, I know Leechburg was actually one of the leaders in this, that actually brought it to the County Commissioner's attention four years ago, but Kataning especially, Ford City, and many of the other communities around us have an issue with blighted houses or blighted properties. How would you, as County Commissioner, try to solve that issue for our communities?
Well, first of all, blighted properties causes a negative feedback loop.
Yeah.
Basically, you have a blighted property, sucks down the values beside it, and it just, people don't want to move in, and it sort of just feeds on itself.
Yep.
So that is not a good thing.
No.
Now, as far as solving the blighted problem, I talk to our councilman down in Leechburg, just to make sure, a little bit more, and I won't lie, this is not one of the subjects I know as well as other subjects, but I talk to different folks. Essentially, we need to streamline the process. Basically, from when you identify a blighted property until you get it torn down and clear the way to where you need to get it to, we need to get that process as quick as possible, from point A to destination. And that's one of the things that I heard from our councilman, essentially, the current county process is slow, and I don't know where the slowness is, if it's, is the ball on the court somewhere else or at the county level. The one thing I can promise this County Commissioner, that ball will not be in the county's court.
Right.
That will be in somebody else's court. It won't be in ours. We'll move things along and get stuff done. Because every time you get a property torn down and that space cleared up, that clears up a spot for people to build a new house and for new tax revenue. As you sit there, it basically is costing the county money and costing everyone money.
Yeah. Yeah, it's so frustrating to see in the community, you know, you have a house that's blighted, and then you have two houses for sale next to it, and you just wonder, you know, if, would those two families have stayed if the blighted property had been torn down? And so, yeah, I'm glad to hear that it would be a priority for you. The fourth one that I have, big problems, is all of our local cities, I believe, have an issue, like, the issue of managing a city gets more complex every year, it seems.
Yes.
And so you have council people in Kataning, I'm assuming Leechburg is similar, where you have council people that have full-time jobs, they're doing council work as a part-time basis, they're trying to handle it all, they're trying to juggle all the balls, and some things ultimately fall through the cracks. How would you, as a County Commissioner, try to help the local communities to be able to manage and govern effectively?
Well, first of all, being on the school board, I'm very, it's very similar to being on a city council.
I'm sure, yeah.
To do the job right, and I'm sure it's pretty much the same for the city councils and townships and such, it takes a lot of work reading all the material and such, and then you are a part-time person trying to feed everything in at the same time. I mean, you're trying to do your full-time job doing this, and it's very difficult to do all of those. What the county should do is, where they can, do everything they can to offer assistance. If there's something that passes through the county, like I said, the ball won't be in our court.
Yeah.
It will be somewhere else, but it won't be in where we're at. And from that standpoint, that's what I'll do to help there. There's also multimodal grants that we can work with, also the LERTAs and different Keystone Opportunities. Anything that we can help out with to move things forward, we will. At the end of the day, I understand it's tough being at that level. I commend every one of those folks. I've made it a point to get out to a lot of the meetings. My goal is to get to most of them if I can, if not all of them. And I hear the same thing over and over again, and you see the same things, it's just people that care about their community giving everything they have, but it's a lot of work.
Yeah, absolutely. You being from Leechburg, I thought maybe, maybe we could ask an additional question here.
Sure.
I know it's not on the list, but Leechburg seems to have done a really nice job downtown. Their downtown area has filled up a lot over the past few years, done a nice job revitalizing all those kinds of things. Is there anything that you've gleaned, kind of watching that process, that we could apply in Kataning or in Ford City or any other of the communities in Armstrong County?
Well, I think all areas. I mean, I'm proud of Leechburg.
Yeah.
Very proud of Leechburg. When you go down for Pink Day and you see the heart that's in there with everyone, and a lot of people take pride in their, I mean, at the pro-owner level.
Yeah.
People love that community, love their school. I've never seen when somebody's fallen on hard times that the whole community just doesn't band together and help that person out. How that can apply, I get the feeling all the other communities beyond Leechburg do that, too. It just is working for Leechburg. Our school is working really well, very little proud community. I'm really proud to say I'm from Leechburg.
Yeah.
I hope that whatever enthusiasm is from that town, that we can spread it everywhere, and there's stuff from everywhere else in the community can go there as well.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd be just super interested. I know that there were some business owners down there that were kind of the push for a lot of the local events and those kinds of things, but I don't know. I just always am looking at, and I, just from you talking about South Point and all those kinds of things, I know you're always looking for, hey, something's going right there. What can we do here to make that happen here? So, that's just, just an aside.
Gotcha.
So I hear a lot of complaints about taxes in the county. That's one of the issues that comes up over and over again whenever we talk county politics. What's your view on the tax issue? What do you think that, you know, what, just what's your opinion on it as an, as an ex- County Commissioner?
Well, first of all, most of the taxes that are wrought upon us are from policies that have nothing to do with County Commissioners. They all come at the state level. Don't let anybody fool you about that. And then also, the taxes, the way they come from, that come, or get levied on the folks, the county, and I went through the numbers today, essentially, they're a very small part in the 20% range of the property taxes collected. School taxes is the majority of the taxes which are brought on the folks. So the school boards actually probably have the most skin in the game as far as collecting taxes.
Right.
And the municipalities are about $1 and $10 that are collected, approximately. So the taxes, a lot of this is really, again, at the state level. It is not at the municipal level. Now, what you can do as a Commissioner, as I've done as a school board member, you do everything you can to keep the costs down. And there's not a lot of room to work with there. After you take into account salaries, you take into account healthcare costs and such, and we've went to great lengths to optimize, where we've went from a PPO to a high deductible plan. And the thing is, you don't ever want to take away a service at something that somebody had or a benefit somebody had and, you know, make something less.
Right.
So it's very difficult to do that and then keep the costs down. We've done everything we could at Leechburg. Last year, we actually enjoyed a, the Armstrong County residents enjoyed a very modest tax decrease, which is almost unheard of.
Yeah, seriously.
In these days. I hope we can do that this year, but it's gonna be a little bit tougher to do that. And something people don't realize, the budget for, and I'm just using Leechburg as an example, I can't speak to anywhere else, I don't have the data. Essentially, in 2008, the federal government put 2% of the money in, state put in 50% of the money into our school, and Leechburg property taxes, local taxes, was 44%. In 2018, the federal government only put 1% in, the state put 52%, and the property wage taxes were 47. If you could pick all that up, basically, the part that was passed on to the local tax part was higher than before. And also, at that same time, PISers, which is the retirement system, basically, in 2008, 2% of our budget went back into the retirement system for the state. In the year of 2018, 13%, or approximately $2 million, so $2 million out of the 14.7 million dollars went back into the retirement system.
Yeah.
And just a little bit more interesting tidbit about all that, essentially, between 2008, 2009, the state somehow in the retirement system lost over $20 billion.
Oh, wow.
So now it was underfunded, so now the taxpayers, and it has nothing to do with County Commissioners or school boards or local municipalities, are now having to pick up the bill for that shortfall that occurred before, and it's not going down anytime soon. The retirement system is still underfunded.
Yeah.
So what can happen with taxes? It isn't, again, at the county level, municipal level, and local level, you can do everything you can to keep the cost in reason. At the end of the day, what we have to do as County Commissioners, as all the local leaders from all the municipalities, we gotta band together and say, "Hey, state lawmakers, you need to refi, find a new way to fund this or put more of the state funding into this." I mean, they've cut us 3% over the last 10 years, plus raised the retirement system cost.
Yeah.
What we need is the state to put in more money and take that burden off the local property owners and put it back at the state level. Exactly how to do that, there's a lot of different plans in there to make that happen, but right now, it isn't at the County Commissioner level.
Sure. Yeah, I think a lot of people don't understand that 70% is for the schools, only 20% is actually the county budget.
Yes.
And so the county taxes really, probably not all that high.
Yes.
When you actually consider.
And we had, like, Gilpin Township just passed the LERTA for 10 years with an amortization of 10% over the 10 years, and they came to us and said, "Why don't you do the same thing for Leechburg?" And it's, and like, of course, I'm all for tax cuts. And what we did was, we compromised. We said, "Okay, how about a five-year, so we don't stick a school board beyond the terms of people now?" Because basically, their $1 that they don't get is, works out to like $9 for us.
Right.
So it was very important that, you gotta think about that. You can't just summarily say, "Okay, of course, we want to do that." And don't get me wrong, I want to see new business in here. I also recognize, there's a lot of people who've worked all their lives, paid taxes, They shouldn't lose too much out of the deal either.
Yeah, absolutely. It kind of, my mind went back to when you said, when your, your, your history, that you had ran the DMV. And you had to service a lot of customers with not enough resources. As county commissioner, I think that will apply very well for you, unfortunately.
Tell you a very interesting story about that. It was funny, this was back in 1991, I was in the Air Force, I was an MP. And I just got back from Korea. I was assigned to Suhwon Air Base, Korea, and I just got back to the States. I was really gunning to get my degree done. I actually also worked a part-time job while working full-time in the Air Force at Thomas Pizza. Anyhow. Essentially, I couldn't, at the same time, the Gulf War was going on, so I volunteered, of course, to go. And my boss is like, or the commander's like, why do you want to do that? Don't you want to get your degree? I said, yes, sir, but I want to serve and I can't, I might as well go and serve, you know, in the war zone. And he said, no, you're gonna go to school. So he says, what do you know about the vehicle registration? I said, I don't know anything about it. He says, well, go tell the other guy, and this nickname, by the way, this commander was sundown.
Yeah.
He had this habit of telling people they were fired and to be gone from your office by sundown.
Oh geez.
Anyhow, I had to go over and tell the guy who had the job before me, hey, guess what? You don't have that job anymore. And basically, the commander looked at me and said, you have three months to figure this out.
Yeah.
And I was, I was thinking, there is no way I'm gonna have somebody come in three months and tell me, we're gonna shut this down. And it was an undaunting task. The wait time was over four hours. I mean, it was horrible. We had people just out the door.
Yeah.
And then all of a sudden, and it's like, why are we in such bad shape? And they basically said, well, you're manned for active duty, which is about 5,000 people for the base. But the base serviced almost half a million retirees.
Oh my.
And they said, well, we don't count that into the manning process. So it was like, okay, what am I gonna do? And then it's like, all these retirees around, and all of a sudden, I said, just thought to myself, how about if I have them volunteer and help me?
Yeah.
Within two years, I had 42 volunteers working for me. The wait time was at 15 minutes. And I learned that all these volunteers, I took care of them really well. I had colonels, chief master sergeants, all working for me. They did everything they could. And the only thing they didn't do were the things that we had to absolutely do, which was signing the ID cards and signing the registrations. But we had them helping out in every way, shape and form. And that out of the box thinking, got this section back into the right place. The IG founded a couple of years later as one of the most excellent programs. But basically, there was lemonade, and there was no way I was gonna be fired. And that's the kind of attitude I'll take to the county.
Yeah.
I will go in there. I'm not going in there for anything but to do good and serve.
Yeah.
I will lead all the county workers. They will see me in there and they can hold me to a standard equal or higher to them.
That's a great story. I'm glad, I'm glad we went there, because that's a, you know.
I have lots of war stories.
I think that will, I think that that experience will directly apply if you become the next county commissioner, no doubt. So. Well, last question. I'm kind of obsessed with vision. I think where there's no vision, we're not just, we're not going anywhere. So. As the next county commissioner, let's say you had a couple of terms and everything went, went the way that Commissioner Shea wanted it to go. What would Armstrong County look like eight, 10 years from now?
Well, first of all, the things I said I want to do, that's where I want to take it. But the big thing is, as a leader, what you do is, you take the flag and you set it way out. You plant it out there and you say, okay, everybody, we're going towards that flag. And to me, I look at the county, this is a great place. There is so much opportunity here. We have great people. Everywhere I've gone, I've never not met a good amount of people. And I've been around the world. It's not just here. I could have picked anywhere I wanted to. I had no doubt in my mind I was gonna come back here. But I digress a little bit. But you know, I think about where I want to go with the county. Right now, we're getting there, things are coming around a little bit. But what I want to do is imagine 10 years from now, I'm going to a diner down in my little town of Leechburg. All the street fronts are filled up with businesses. I sit there and talk to people. And this is the most important of all. We talk about our kids and grandchildren who are here in Armstrong County, who stayed here because there was opportunity here to live here. I want my daughters to be able to live here, my son to come back here someday and say, hey, this is a great place. I am really glad I'm here. And this is as good a place as anywhere else to live. And that's where my vision is. That simple.
I love that. Very cool. Well, if, just to finish up, how can people get involved with your campaign? If they want to support you, what's the best way to do that? How can they get in contact with you if they have any more questions?
Basically, they can look me up on Facebook. If they ping me, friend me out from pretty much everyone who reaches out to me. And essentially, I have a campaign page there. What I'm looking for, if folks want to help by putting a sign up in their yard or invite me to their place to talk to a group or something, I'm more than willing to do that. I've been making it out to all the fish fries, all the breakfast, gun bashes, everything around the county. Been going to the municipal meetings. You'll see me about everywhere. I am that motivated. I want to hear from everybody. I realize everybody here has something to give. As a leader, you don't just go to the person that talks the loudest. You also go to the people that are sitting over there quietly, because those are usually the ones that have the best ideas. And honestly, if you don't care who gets the credit, if you don't care who, where that goes, you can do really good things. And that's what we can do is together, we can all work together, get the right inputs, and get the plan to get out there where we said we want to get to in eight to 10 years from now.
I love it. Well, I will put all of the links to get to contact Anthony in the description, so you guys can check that out. Make sure you follow him and follow the campaign as we march through the primary and into November. It's been a pleasure to get to meet you. Impressive resume. Really enjoyed getting to know you and get to talk to you. Hopefully, you guys enjoyed it as well. Anything else you want to say in closing?
No, I encourage everyone to get on vote on May 21st and in the fall election.
Absolutely. Well, thanks so much for watching you guys. As always, we will see you in the next one.